I'd like to call the Village Council meeting of Monday, November 8th, 2021. The order will be called for.
Commissioner Reed?
President.
Commissioner Milovich-Walters?
President.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
President. Let's all stand to the courts of the elections. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You have your practice this evening, the draft minutes from our regular council meeting of October 25th, 2021. Questions, comments, or suggested changes? If not, I would see the motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Okay.
Any other motion in a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich-Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. Consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda are routine or unthought for the direction of order commissioners and will be brought up on motion. Expression is decided that items will be removed from consent agenda and considered separately. Item A, to approve payment of invoices on the law listed on the date of 2021 in the amount of $212,879.04. Item B, to approve the supplemental law listed November 8th, 2021 for manual checks, payroll, recurrent money transfers in the amount of $498,79.98. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any other motion or second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich-Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. Any items of old business to be brought into the council at this time? Now, I would move to information updates. Public Works and Streets Recreation Board Commissioner Milovich-Walters.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I have a couple of items on the agenda. The first one is regarding our 2022 MST pavement program. On August 9th of this year, the village council awarded a 2022 MFT project to Lindahl Brothers in the amount of $728,335, with the authority of the village engineer to spend up to $800,000. We have pay estimate number two in the amount of $153,332.28, and we're seeking approval to pay this estimate with holding 10% as retention. Does anybody have any questions? Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve pay estimate number two for the 2022 MST pavement improvement project to Lindahl Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $153,332.28.
Second.
Any other motion or second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Milovich-Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries.
My next item on the agenda is regarding patching of 120th Street. 120th Street east of 92nd Avenue is a dead-end street that has been deteriorating over the last several years. The village has attempted to patch it, but it needs more than a mandate at this point. Public Works has asked for a proposal from Carlson Asphalt to complete a repair during this construction season. The repair will consist of removing the last 500 feet of road, replacing it with an inch of binder and two inches of service. The cost to complete this project is $8,580, and the money should come out of the half percent sales tax fund. Does anybody have any questions regarding this one? Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from Carlson Asphalt in the amount of $8,580 to repair the 3,172 square feet of 120th Street.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Milovich-Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries.
And then just a couple of quick announcements. Chipping is done for the year. It's over. Don't put your branches outside. We will come back in the spring of 2022. If you do have some branches, you can put them in your yard waste containers and put it out with your regular garbage, and they'll pick them up until November 27th. So you have a few more weeks to get those things out there, and your regular garbage pickup will save them. And then just another reminder, if you're selling your house and leaving the beauty of Hills Park, I don't know why you would, but if you are, you can call the utility department to arrange for a final water meter reading, a minimum of 24 hours in advance of your closing date, and that way you'll have your final numbers at the closing table. The number is 708-671-3716 to call and set that up. And lastly, just a reminder to mark your calendars, Thursday, December 4th will be our tree lighting and holiday extravaganza. It's not really extravaganza, party, festival, fun time at our rec center, so just put it on your calendar, and more information to come regarding that, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Reed, building your public property report.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. The village building department would like to advise residents to change the batteries in your carbon monoxide and smoke detectors. If you do not currently have a carbon monoxide detector, please consider banning. Illinois state law requires that every home be equipped with at least one carbon monoxide alarm within 15 feet of every bedroom. Additional detectors on every level of your home provide extra protection against carbon monoxide poisoning. Seventeen inspections were completed during the time period of October 20 through November 2nd, resulting in collection fees of $18,961.77. To date, we have allocated $1,972, excuse me, $1,900, no, $1,9272.22. Next on the agenda. This is in reference to a referral to the plan commission to hold a public hearing regarding potential text amendments regarding authorized variances as found in section 1264.04 of the village code. As you all know, I've been on a rampage trying to modify the code for a long time. The rampage continues. Staff has discussed multiple properties in which the provisions of section 1264.04, that's the variance section, creates a substantial obstacle to the development of certain properties within the single-family residence area. Section 1264.04 notes that the council may vary the provisions of its own code for cases where there are practical difficulties or particular hardships, but then limits the type and extent of variances that are allowed to be authorized. The code lists 20 specific provisions limiting the specific types of variances to be authorized. This language, believe it or not, can create obstacles in that certain zoning provisions are not even allowed to have an authorized variance, or does other provisions have a cap limiting the extent of the variance to be granted. These limits could be considered arbitrary. The specific subsection of immediate concern is 1264.04, sub E as in network, which allows for front, side, or rear yard setback variances, but limits the reduction to 33% of the required yard. While the review of the entirety of section 1264.04 is underway, staff recommends pursuing an initial text amendment specific to section 1246.04, E as in network, and 1264.04, S as in SAM, as it pertains to the maximum allowed 33% reduction for yard variance requests. This text amendment proposal will require the village plan commission to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the village council. Staff has identified at least two potential single-family projects requiring variances that are likely limited by the subsection heretofore mentioned. Section 1264.04S is also included in the review request, as this provision allows for up to 60% reduction in the side or rear yard for proposed additions to existing houses a lot less than one acre. This provision will no longer be necessary if the 33% limit is removed. I've said a whole lot, said a whole lot of percentages. People, we got to clean this stuff up, but this makes absolutely no sense. Why should residents have to be physicists or mathematicians just when they come to present us with a plan? It makes no sense, people. We need to clean it up. So, in an effort to do that... Well, before I make a motion, let me just ask, does anyone want to apply what I've just said?
Mostly mother of God, no.
See, eyes are glazing over, and people went, "Would you please shut up and get on with it?" Mayor, did you have anything to say before I make a motion?
Are you mad?
Thank you, sir. In that light, I move to refer the matter of a potential text amendment of section 1264.04 to the plan commission for a public hearing and recommendation to the village council, and would seek a second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? Anyone else have any comments? If not, I would ask the current clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich-Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Pope?
Strong work to you, yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries.
That concludes my report. See, this is what you folks need, letting me come out of the house. I got nothing else, Mayor.
I got bad news. That coat needs a lot more than just these two.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. It's great to have you. I'm only sad that I'm not there with you.
To throw something at me, I know. I got it, Mayor.
You don't live far, we could be over in 15 minutes.
Public Works' safety report, Commissioner Pope?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. We'll start with the police activity report from October 25th through November 7th, year of our Lord 2021. Eighteen hundred and forty-two calls. We wrote 10 adjudication tickets and one additional traffic ticket, four written warnings and an additional five verbal warnings, took 19 case reports, unfortunately eight accident reports, arrested an adult and impounded the car, a juvenile arrest, there were none, 11 senior checks, and an additional 20 citizen assists. So that's what the Payles Park Police Department's been up to for the last two weeks. Couple of quick announcements. It's that season, folks. Please be alert for porch pirates. Lots of calls about packages that were supposed to be arriving, that haven't arrived, that have arrived in different spots. Part of that problem is that parcels left unattended at your front door are easy targets for thieves. Couple of tips, which I'm sure you're all somewhat aware of. Please sign up for delivery alerts from the shipper, so you know when it's supposed to have been there. You can get many packages now, particularly on that buying site that begins with an A and ends with an N, delivered to lockers or local branches of stores and pick them up yourself. You can also ask a trusted neighbor, we've got lots of trusted neighbors at Payles Park, to be on the lookout and/or receive or retrieve your delivery. And then we've listed a bunch of telephone numbers to be able to call if you've been a victim of porch pirates, including Amazons, Ebays, FedExes, UPS, and the United States Postal Service. We have had a couple of people not understand that UPS is one thing, and the United States Postal Service, which is USPS, is a completely different agency. So again, if you have any issues, we'd be more than happy to help you out, but take a peek, and if you go on our Facebook page, and if you go on the website, we have a bunch of suggestions there. And then it's also a season for something good. The Payles Park Police Cadet food drives began this weekend and will continue through January 1st. We're looking for donations of non-perishable foods, such as canned or boxed goods. It's important to point out that while this might give you an excellent opportunity to clean out that area underneath your counter where you put all that stuff, expired stuff really doesn't fly very well, and it's just going to be trashed anyway. So if you're looking for us to throw out your stuff, save us a step, and just please donate things that are still, at least not having reached their use by date. The cadets are accepting donations here at the Payles Park Police Department through normal business hours. The donations go to the Payles Township Food Pantry, which assists families that are in towns within the Payles Township border. The rec center is also accepting donations for the cadets' food drive, as well as the Payles Park library. Thanks to you both. And again, if you have any questions or information, or if you'd like to schedule a pickup, we could arrange that. That concludes my report, unless Chief Miller has something he wants to ask.
Nothing, Commissioner.
Thank you for being here, sir. And that does conclude my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's no accounts and finances report this evening, so I'll move to my report. We have consideration to adopt ordinance 2021-29, ordinance, I mean, part six, chapter 698, part eight, title two, checkers 804 and 808 of the Payles Park Village Code. Regarding the video gaming, the ordinance states the Payles Park Village Code would be amended to repeal 698, chapter 698, and regarding the current video gaming provision in its entirety, add new sections to checkers 804 and 808. The village code would be amended to add class A, B, and G, and GBG liquor license categories. Current holders of class A and class G liquor license would have the ability to apply or to apply to the votes, to the votes, to change their liquor license category to the ABG or class GBG liquor license category respectively, which if approved would allow for video gaming at the licensed premises in compliance with the video gaming requirements of the Payles Park Code. So, just background history, several businesses who hold a village liquor license have acquired over the past several years, about being logged, licensed, have video gaming terminals on their premises. Current village code, chapter 698 prohibits video gaming. Village council adopted ordinance 2010-1, J. Ray Love, 2010, to ban video gaming in Payles Park. The only gaming act is followed by 230 ILCS 40/1 and active as Public Act 9634, July 13, 2009, allows for video gaming in the state of Oklahoma. In 2010, many of the communities from Payles Park opted out of video gaming by passing ordinance as like the one adopted by the Payles Park Village Council. Today, only neighboring community of Payles Heights still operates video gaming. The draft ordinance before the village council would repeal chapter 698 of the village code and add new sections to chapters 804 and 808. The ordinance, if approved, would create the ability for Payles Park class A consumption on the premises, five licenses, and class G consumption on the premises of a golf course, one license. Liquor license holders, the ability to apply video gaming license. Each qualified applicant could apply to the village council for the approval to create a video gaming license. Out of action, each category of video gaming license would be zero. The draft ordinance would do the following. Prohibit video gaming cafes where more than 49% of the revenues would be from video gaming. It would allow for the play of video games only during permitted hours at liquor sales. Video gaming terminals to be in a segregated area with a physical barrier and restricted to persons 21 years of age or and older. More on that topic later. Allow the total number of video gaming terminals per establishment at six. Prohibit video gaming signage on the exterior of any establishment. Again, a little bit more on that item in one moment. Require video surveillance of the video gaming terminal area within a minimum of 30 days of video recording storage. Each approved establishment will require to have a direct connect virtual or online system to the village's police department, and the gaming ordinance would assess $25 for video terminal operator in village of Payles Park in addition to the annual cost of our liquor license and other licenses. Our staff has reviewed data from the military department about the municipal share of video gaming facilities to the communities of Alsit, Prescott, Lot, Oak Forest, Ballard, Village City, Will's Bridge, and Wurk. For the period 2000, January 2019, August 2021, the average engagement in municipal distribution per established member in these eight communities is 16,893. That average number of video gaming establishments per community is 23.63. Back to nearly items I just mentioned. Let's see. The item prohibit video gaming signage on the exterior of any establishment. Questions were raised during our last meeting about interior signage that could be visible from the exterior, and we have our attorneys, my book, or Jenkins, have provided a revised draft that makes it clear that any signage that is visible from the exterior of an establishment advertising video gaming is prohibited under our ordinance. Secondly, there's some questions regarding video gaming terminals being in a segregated area with a physical barrier and restricted to persons 21 years of age and older. So, in a liquor establishment like a bar, you know, the question was raised, whether any secondary area would be required if only persons 21 years of age and older were permitted in the establishment? And the question raised, do we want to be more specific and more restrictive than that and require that even in an area where only persons aged 21 years of age and older could be, we still want to restrict and segregate these video gaming areas? So, again, the revised draft does appear to make clear that this proposed ordinance would segregate or separate the video gaming area from the main areas of the establishment. And I don't know if our attorneys would like to comment, maybe amplify on my comments.
Someone's walking to the podium, Mayor.
Thank you. So, we did revise the ordinance to make more specific requirements about the segregation and separation. So, the most recent draft does have the requirement that it be in a separate room with full floor to ceiling walls that couldn't have windows in them, but it is a completely separate room or area that just requires a doorway, the accessway to be visible, so that an employee, in accordance with state law, can ensure that only people over the age of 21 are able to access that area. So that is what has been added to the ordinance to create a more restrictive provision. Thank you.
Well, stay for a moment. So, exactly in that section, I did have a question that I'd like us to consider, is it talks about window, which is gray, and talks about doorway, and the way it was phrased, I believe, and I don't have the red line copy in front of me, that you could, it could have a door or not have a door, but it would have a doorway. And my whole thing is if it has the door, I believe that that door should be transparent, glass or something. So if the door is closed, you can see inside and see what's going on, because that was the intent of being able to see what's going on. And additionally, I would like to see that the positioning of this room where the machines are, that the machines, when the doorway is open, are not visible from the outside exterior of the bar as well, like through the window. Because, I mean, that would be the purpose of, like, that would be the only signage for outside, so we just want it configured in a direction that would keep that from happening.
Certainly. And the way that it's set up right now, it does require approval of whatever that configuration is by the village manager or designated, so they would have to submit plans before, you know, they would get any type of approval, but we can definitely add more clarifying language to address the concerns that...
I just feel like, you know, I would hate for somebody to go back and figure out our intent and rather make it as clear as we can upfront, so that there isn't confusion. They come with plans the right way the first time.
Certainly. Any else?
No, I have a tendency not to craft leave the language in public. Thank you.
So, does anyone else have comments about ordinances drawn to the revisions that were just completed, or any other aspect of this proposed ordinance?
I do, Mayor. I feel it's incumbent every time we talk about this, that we try to make it clear as we consider this ordinance, that the public understands that, first of all, we only have six liquor licenses in town right now, and there are no more right now. Anybody who would want one would have to come and apply and have to be approved. There are no video gaming licenses at this point either. This ordinance considers that the people that could ask for video gaming are only places where you can actually open that beer or open that bottle of wine and drink it on the premises, so not your gas station, not Jewels, none of those type of establishments could have video gaming per our ordinance. They give keeping it not advertised as you walk past the bar or the restaurant, keeping it in an area where people underage will not see it or walking into it is very important to us. This is not, in my opinion, being considered for the purpose of revenue stream for the village. It's going to be pennies, you know, in relation to the big picture. My thoughts about considering this at all are that the places that have come to us and said that they would like to be able to do this, have video gaming, feel that they're losing business to neighboring towns for places that do offer video gaming. And some people may say, "Well, why do we care?" Well, we have a small amount of economic development in our town. We don't have a lot of area where we have restaurants and bars and things of that nature. And I, for one, enjoy having these establishments in our town. I like having places I like to eat that are right here, and I don't have to drive to Oak Brook or Burr Ridge or even into Orland to eat. And if this is what they're saying they may need to stay afloat, to stay in our town, I think it's important for us to consider this. And if we're considering doing this, to construct it in a way to protect what we all love about our town, but also to allow these businesses to stay in town. With that being said, we also have a lot of property that we annexed. We don't know how it's going to be developed. We don't know if we will approve anything out there or not, but to have the ability to make choices going forward, I think is important, to give us something to have bargaining power with. And lastly, it says, "Abstain no video gaming cafes" in the ordinance, so if... So, if anybody's concerned about anything popping up that you can just go in and play games all day and maybe buy a sandwich, that isn't happening. So, I felt it's important to always reiterate these kind of points so that the people at home can kind of try to grasp the full picture of what we're wrestling with. All right, that's all I got for you.
Yeah, Commissioner, thank you. And one just further amplification on that point about the economic development. Many of these establishments that we're talking about, the bar, restaurants, the bars, they're also anchors of the developments. So, what is an anchor? An anchor is something that attracts traffic, that helps all the other businesses in the shopping center. So, there's a symbiotic relationship between these businesses. And my fear is that losing the establishments that have traffic will cause other businesses to be impacted negatively. I don't think that's something that we've mentioned in the past, but it is a consideration for me in thinking about approving any gaming ordinance for our town.
Commissioner Polk?
I echo what Commissioner Millichs-Walter said. A couple of other things. There are, as to best of my knowledge, at least that I've been informed, there are only two businesses in town currently holding liquor licenses that are interested in exploring the possibility. And those would be Cog Hill and the new Tavern on the Greens, which was formerly McDavence. Obviously, sentiment can change over time, but it isn't like every restaurant currently holding a liquor license has come to us and said we have to have video gambling. So, that's thing one. Thing two, Chief Millichs, do you have any thoughts about the impact on community policing, given the possibility that video gambling might be allowed?
Commissioner, your direction, we undertook a study with many of our counterparts throughout Chicago, Metro area, DePage, Will counties, and Cook County. And I might add, I was chief of World of Hills when they adopted off-track betting. I remember Mayor Hastings asking me to take a road trip to an off-track betting. I don't gamble, so I've never been in one, but I went to the one in Oakbrook. And I sat there with a bunch of very elderly men watching race tracks and horses running around track from all over the world and have a beer and a sandwich. As far as impact on law enforcement services, it's negligible. Our counterparts in work over there have not only video gaming, but have a rather large dispensary. And the calls are very negligible as far as impacting the community or police services or anything like that. There's no excess correlation between these establishments and crime or so forth.
Fair enough. Thanks very much. I appreciate your reference on that behalf. And then I just had one other question, which may have been me reading through the verbiage and mixing something up. But as a part of this ordinance, on January 1st, the hours of liquor operation serving change? Did anybody else see that? Mayor?
Yeah, Commissioner Polk, I'm not following you?
So, I thought I read that somewhere in the discussion in this ordinance that the closing time for bars on January the 1st, 2022, is extended by an hour, from 2:00 AM to 3:00 AM. It could be that my eyes were crossed at that point.
No, they're not crossed, by golly. It says, so subsection A, Section 4, Sub A, however, on January 1st, blah, 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 blah. Well, obviously, we're not voting. It was not my intent to actually cast a vote on this, because there's still some work that needs to be done.
I absolutely understand, but this was the final nail in that coffin for me.
If I might, I think that's a general provision in the liquor license code of the village. It's been in there since January 1st.
We increased the liquor by an hour?
It's been in there for as long as...
So, we start off at, what, 11:00 and we've gone to 12:00 and 1:00 or 2:00?
It's 2:00. It's 2:00. On January 1st, it can extend by an hour for the New Year's Eve.
Someone will have to...
Oh, just for the day.
Just for the day.
Just for that month.
It doesn't say that, folks. The way I read that, it says, on January 1st...
Oh, no, I get it. It does say it, but I can understand what you got out of it, but... Yeah, it just wasn't clear. Okay.
Thank you.
Nice catch, though, Dan.
No, you send me this stuff, I read it. I'm sorry. I'll stop.
No, no, never.
Fair enough. That's all I have at the moment. Commissioner Reed?
Yeah, I thought I'd let the OGs go.
Go. You've been here as long as we have.
No, you got about a couple of years. Anyway, I have not reached any type of conclusion relative to this matter. You know, it started off, there were possibly five Class As and one Class G that could in fact be eligible for. I think that's still the case this evening. However, in light of the discussion this evening, it would appear as though a new establishment and a golf course are the ones who are actually trying to, may be inclined to possibly pursue relief under this section of the ordinance. Okay, that's interesting.
It may be that the other ones aren't willing to commit until they see what the ordinance provides.
I just found out something this evening that I was not aware of. And I'm simply expressing the fact that I was not aware of that until this was this evening. Thank you for that revelation.
I'm here, sir.
Not saying it colors what I was about to say, but I appreciate that information. You know, the way this thing is structured, it's like, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna make it so that, you know, it's not gonna have a negative impact on children and, you know... Well, I've never been to a golf course to golf, so I don't know what they do. If they drink and all that kind of stuff, or whether or not children are there. I don't know, okay? They can drink there now, and children can be there with a drink, I'm guessing. I don't know. The new restaurant, which has not yet been established, is finally gonna have a liquor license. I don't know what it's gonna look like. So, are the old idiots gonna benefit from this? The folks that got the licenses? Now, they possibly could, but we don't know if they will. We've been getting information from folks in the village expressing concerns about what it is that we're doing. If memory serves me correct, less than 25% of the eligible voters cast a ballot to put us in office. That means there's 75% of folks who didn't say they're... Maybe it's because we're doing a good job. Maybe it's because they don't care. Maybe it's because things are moving the way they should move. There's no need to create a problem. My question is, is this going to create a problem? We all know. But I really, really think if we live in a democracy, we ought to maybe solicit a little bit more input if folks want to express themselves as to what it is we're doing, because I'm just not comfortable taking this leap. You know, this is something new that ain't been done before. Yeah, new stuff always happens, but this could have an impact on the residents of the village. We're not the moral police, no, and we're not trying to be. But we have to listen to what folks have to say. And that's all I'm saying. I'm not made up my mind running with the other, but I beg, I plead, residents of the village, let us know what you want us to do. We've already said it's gonna be separate, okay? You can't see it when you walk in. No larynx signage. Well, at the golf course, who cares? We're not larynx signage again. I don't know. For golf football. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. Anyway, I'm not gonna belabor the point. I don't know what I'm gonna do, but whatever it is, I'm not prepared to do it tonight. I want information. Talk to us. Talk to Dan. Talk to Nicole. Talk to the mayor. And in desperate need, help, talk to me.
Do it, God.
I know, I'm down on the list, but that's okay. I'll listen to you. I ain't got an answer, but I'll listen. Tell us something, folks. That's all I got. I'm done.
Thanks, Commissioner Reed. I have one more thing I want to just briefly mention. So, many of the people who've reached out with negative views on this have pointed out that they don't want to legalize gambling in Payless Park. I got news for you, folks. We've been gambling in Payless Park legally for years. And I would be willing to bet that anybody who shops at the shopping center at Jewel Osko has walked past a gambling machine every time they've gone into that store. You walk past it. It's not in a separate room. It's not segregated. It's very advertised. It's advertised on social media. It's advertised on the radio. It's advertised in print, and it's called the Illinois Lottery. That's all I got.
Thank you all. Those are great comments. I have no compulsion to do this in a rush manner. You know, I act with trepidation on this issue. I will do my best, Commissioner Reed, to reach out again on social media before the next meeting, describing the new developments in the ordinance, the clarifications, the further restrictions, and try to solicit as much input as we can. And with that, I would ask for a motion to table this item.
Continue is what the people in the room are saying.
I'll make a motion to continue this matter to the next meeting of...
November 22nd.
November 22nd. Thank you.
Second.
Get a motion to the second and no further discussion. I would ask the clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Millichs-Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes, and motion carries.
Keep them cards and letters coming in, folks.
Yes, we appreciate all the input that you give us, and we consider it carefully. Clerk's report.
I have no report this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Bane, do you have any?
Not this evening, sir.
All right. I do have some announcements, I've been told. The zoning board of appeals meeting is canceled for November 10th. The historic preservation committee will not meet on November 16th, as there are no agenda items. The library board will have their regular meeting on Wednesday, November 17th, at 5:00 PM with the library. The Dallas finance committee will hold their meetings on Thursday, their meeting on Thursday, November 18th, at 4:00 PM at the preparation center. The planning commission will hold public hearing at 7:00 PM on Thursday, November 18th in the council chambers to consider the following. PDC 2021-07, the Dallas Park was requesting a text letter to Title 6, zoning as follows. One, to mention to Amendment Section 1264, Point 14, to eliminate requirement that front side or rear yard radiation request not exceed 33% of the required yard. And two, to eliminate Section 1264, Point 14, pass as it pertains to requirement that side or rear yard radiation request not to exceed 60% of the required yard in instances where requested variance pertains to construction in addition to an existing building of parcel of less than one acre in size. All are welcome to review the application for relief. This in correspondence to the public hearing, exhibit evidence and testify in the public hearing. Further information, please contact our district department director, Carmen, at 708-671-3731, or Ann Thurman at paylesspark.org. A few more announcements. Women's club, Blood Drive, Payless Park Women's Club, Blood Drive will be held tomorrow, Tuesday, November 9th, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Payless Park Preparation Center. Schedule an appointment, email MarianParkins@maParkins45att.net. Meetings are preferred, but walk-ins are not allowed. Veterans Day ceremony, folks, will be hosting a Veterans Day ceremony this Thursday, November 11th at noon at the Payless Park Preparation Center in Jumezian. Please join us for this important day that we pay tribute to all American veterans. Coffee and bullets will be served at noon ceremony. Secretary of State Mobile Driver Services facility, Tuesday, December 7th. The Secretary of State Mobile Driver Services facility will be here at the Capitol Ministerial Setup from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM following services will be provided. Driver's license renewal, state ID cards, dual-digit licenses, directed licenses, vision screening with BL renewals, vehicle, in-law sticker or license plate. Riders available here in the village hall. I will contact clerk's office at 708-671-3706. Just one question about Mobile Driver Services facility, about real IDs?
Nope.
Nope.
Nope? Okay.
Not available. You have to go to your state driver's license facility.
Okay. It's something...
But you can make appointments at 12 of them now, John.
Yes.
I'm sorry. You can make appointments now at 12 of the DMV facilities for real ID? If you go online.
Because the lines have been horrendous. I think they're getting better, but they have not been good.
Right. If you go online, you can find the 12 that accept appointments.
Good. That's excellent. That's great information. Citizens and visitors common period. Anyone in the audience like to address the council office turn?
We have one, Mayor.
Can you recognize a person?
I did, and I motioned him to the podium.
Thank you all. Good evening. I was just here, hopefully I'd be a larger turn...
Could you just say your name, please?
Sure. My name is Gary Schultz, and I've been a resident for about 38 years. I came here because I read the regional, and I love, Commissioner Polk was looking for more input in the article. And that's why I'm here. I never gamble. I'm not a gambler at all. But I fortunately get out two or three nights a week to various restaurants, some things of that nature. And I don't see any problem with it at all. I totally think it's the right thing to do. More or less like a little hiding in here, because most of the community's already had. So, I don't understand why we don't get our fair share. It sounds like there's only a couple of places that right now are at a good point, but hopefully that will expand. But I'm in favor of it.
Thanks for your comment.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out.
You bet.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience like to be addressed at this turn?
There is no more interest, Mayor Maloney.
Excellent. Thank you for reading my eyes. If there are no such requests, I would seek a motion to adjourn the meeting at this time.
So who?
That.
Bill, welcome to your second. Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Millichs-Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you all. Good evening. Sorry I could not be there with you this evening.
Be careful out there.
All right. Nice.